Good evening. And welcome to the Brown County Board of Supervisors Candidate Forum hosted by the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay. My name is Karen Fly and it has been my pleasure to coordinate this event. On behalf of the league, I would like to thank the candidates who are participating in this forum. All nine candidates were invited to be all five can't all nine candidates involved in the primary election were invited. Six candidates have accepted our invitation to participate. They are District Four Emily Jacobson incumbent from another district that has changed boundaries. Noah Rife and then from District Five, we have Liv Miller and Daniel Thino. District Seven incumbent Tom Freeburg and challenger Leanne Kramer. Leanne Kramer will be is involved in the forum, but her video will not be shown, just her name. So she is definitely in the forum, but you won't see her picture. Candidates Robert Mako declined because of travel situation. Roger Moore declined because of a work obligation. And just this morning, Sherrell Schmidt backed down. She was going to be in it, but something came up and she can't attend. The candidates are running in a primary to nail narrow the field to two candidates. In each district, the COVID pandemic has made it necessary to hold forums virtually with no live audience. Going forward, in order to allow the voters an opportunity to meet the candidates. And to become educated about the important issues in upcoming elections. Our forums need to be handled in this manner. The primary election is Tuesday, February 15th. Because of the pandemic absentee voting or vote by mail has become very popular. Absentee ballots were sent out on Tuesday, January 25th. And early in person voting starts on Tuesday, February 1st. Because of the different devices individuals are using to join us, some windows or squares may appear larger. This is not intended to favor any one candidate. Members of the audience may improve their viewing experience by selecting view active cameras at the top of their screen. Each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement. Next, the questions will rotate between the candidates with each being given one minute 30 second opportunity to answer. In closing, each candidate will have two minutes for final remarks. There is no rebuttal. Questions have been gathered ahead of time and sorted by league members for duplication. Questions must be questions that all candidates can address and they need to be appropriate and pertaining to the issues. Viewers may still submit questions during the forum. The email address is L W V G G B forums 20 at gmail dot com. And it will appear on the screen during the forum. The Brown County Board of Supervisors. Virtual forum candidate forum will be on our Facebook page as well as on our website. The League of Women Voters of the United States recommends. That all league fall forums fall within the FCC's regulations. And will only allow audio video to be broadcast in its entirety, except for the the media covering the event. Before we start, I would like to thank the many league members who helped to make this forum possible. With a special thank you to Steve Hero, a league member who stepped up to help us with the technology needed. The league moderator this evening is Jean Marsh. Jean is a very active member of the league. She is on the League of Women Board Voters Board of Directors and past president of the Green Bay School Board. She is currently the chairperson for the League of Women Voters Healthcare Committee. Please enjoy this forum and remember it is very important to vote.
Thank you, Karen, and welcome to our candidates. Leanne Kramer, Dan Thino, Emily Jacobson, Noah Reeve, Liv Miller, and Tom Freeburg. And welcome to our virtual audience watching from the safety of your home. And thank you for taking time to attend this forum to become informed about this important election. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging the informed and active participation of citizens and government. It influences public policy through education and advocacy. The league never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The timekeeper for this forum is President Linda Bartlett. And with this being a virtual forum, the candidate who begins selected a number closest to the predetermine number. And I will alternate each subsequent question between candidates so that each candidate has the opportunity to respond first. This forum will run for one hour and one half. We will begin with Leanne Kramer for your opening statement, Leanne.
Hi, my name is Leanne Kramer. I've been a resident of District Seven for about 27 years. And. I guess I've decided to run for Brown County Supervisors just because a lot of people have been. You know, they they complain about, you know, how government in a as a whole is ran. Excuse me, and I just decided to try to make a difference and step up to the plate, so to speak, and and. Put my name in there for to run. So I've been having a lot of good conversation with representatives as I'm, you know, the people in the district and. And enjoy talking to them a lot more. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Dan Thino, would you please offer your opening statements?
Well, thank you, Jean. I just wanted, first of all, thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. I think it's a great service to the people of the area. And I just think the league is to be be commended for this opportunity for the people to hear from all the candidates. I especially want to say welcome to my two opponents, one of them being here tonight. It's good that we have competition as part of democracy. I am running for District Five Supervisor for the Brown County Board of Supervisors. At the encouragement of many people in my neighborhood and many outstanding Democrats, Republicans and independents in Brown County. Many people feel that I have a great background to be a very substantial contributor to the goings on of the Board of Supervisors of Brown County. I served two terms as the mayor of my hometown of Ashland. I served four terms as a Wisconsin. State Senator. Most recently, I spent 11 years as President of the Oak Grove Neighborhood Association. I was Chair of the Green Bay Neighborhood Leadership Council and received the EK Men Award for being the most outstanding neighborhood leader in the city of Green Bay. In addition to that, I am currently Vice Chairman of the Green Bay Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Past Chair of the Home and Life Workshops with Neighbor Works here in Green Bay. And I was on the Brown County Park and Recreation Long Range Planning Committee. Because of that substantial background, many people have encouraged me to run because they feel I would be a strong advocate for the needs of the people in. District Five of Brown County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emily Jacobson, if you'd please offer your opening statement?
Hello, my name is Emily Jacobson. I am running for District Four here in Brown County. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity and also everyone who came to be part of this forum. I believe that you can't really make decisions unless you walk in the shoes of those affected. So regardless of political views, I represent my neighbors. Their voice matters, they should be heard. I enjoy helping find answers, connecting my constituents to the right people and hearing what they're passionate about in the county. I live and work in District Four. My children attend school in this district. I'm a life east sider. You know, and I am a former county board supervisor for District Five. And I would continue my passion for health and safety for our community, my commitment to listening and responding to my constituents' concerns. And just my love of Brown County as a supervisor. I would also say that I sit on Health and Human Services Committee when I was a county board supervisor. I really enjoyed that committee, also the planning commission for the city I was commissioner on. I'm involved in with Neighbor Works Green Bay and sit on numerous other boards. I truly am somebody who loves my community and wants the best for them and truly just love making connections with everyone in the area and helping them find those end goals in what they're looking for. So, thank you.
Noah Reeve, if you'd please offer your opening statement?
Thank you. My name is Noah Reeve. I use the she series of pronouns. I am running for the Brown County District Board in Brown County Board in District Four, same as Emily. And again, want to thank everyone for the opportunity to come before y'all and to share a little bit about our campaign and everyone else who is tuning in. So I I was diagnosed with type one diabetes when I was two and a half years old. I am a member of the LGBTQIA plus community. And those experiences have definitely highlighted what happens when those who are most impacted by policies are not those who are closest to the decision making. I've been an advocate in the field of healthcare advocate as a healthcare advocate for the last three years. Trying to help people understand and navigate the healthcare field and also fighting for more equitable and affordable care for everyone. And I just firmly believe that no matter where you come from. No matter the color of your skin, how much money is in our wallet or how we all identify, what we work together as a Brown County community. We can all thrive and I think that means governing with no exceptions. And that means that every single person, no matter where you come from, no matter what you look like, who you love, is a part of our community in Brown County. And I think it's just so invaluable and I think our diversity is what makes us a beautiful and amazing community. I think that that means expanding rights for our LGBTQ community to make sure that everyone feels safe and valued. I think that means fostering resiliency and making sure that we're all fighting for a climate transition that make sure we can all be included. And I think that means looking at the root of what causes inequity in Brown County. And I'm just so thrilled to be here and really excited to speak with everyone and share our vision for Brown County. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Liv Miller, if you'd offer your opening statement?
Hi, everyone. My name is Liv Miller. I'm running for Brown County Board, District Five. First, I also want to thank the league for hosting this. Really great. I also want to express how incredibly grateful I am to everyone tuning in at home. My campaign, Live for Brown County Board, is all about us gathering together proactively, creating the future that we want. You listening in, asking questions, just being engaged in the process. That's how we do that. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for being here. The people of Brown County are eager to gather together. These past few years, it's proven that when we gather together, we thrive. We want to be active, connected members of our community. Isolation, loneliness, disconnection that really causes us harm. Our personal health, our performance at the job, our happiness, all of these things are hurt when we don't feel that sense of togetherness that we yearn for and that we really deserve. I'm running for county board with my number one priority being reviving, really leaning on that sense of community that I've always found and always loved here in Northeast Wisconsin. How do I want to do that? First, we need to invest in our public spaces. We need to make libraries, parks, museums accessible for everyone. Those people who really need those places, who really find the resources and the joy there, they're typically the ones who are most likely to be turned away. Or unable to get there at all. And when we prioritize making these accessible for everyone, we really can have a chance lean into those resources. We have to provide our health department with absolutely everything they need. We can't exist as a community when we can't gather together unless it's safe for everyone to do that, especially our most vulnerable. Everyone deserves the dignity of being able to enjoy that what Brown County has to offer. And lastly, we can gather around a common goal, have something we can accomplish together. For me, that's Brown County's Clean Energy Pledge. I'm so excited about our renewable energy pledge and I want us to share and celebrate this momentous opportunity to create a cleaner, safer home for our children and for our grandchildren. So thank you all so much for being here. Once again, I hope you resonate with my message of gathering people together. And I really hope that you want to join in with me and really create that for all of us. I'm excited to get connected and I'm excited to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Freeburg, if you'd please open offer your opening statement?
Yeah, hi. Yeah, I guess, first of all, thank you for the invitation. I know when I first ran, I didn't have the chance to attend, but I'm nervous and excited to to be here today. So, yeah, my name is Tom Freeburg. I've been a resident of Green Bay since 2009 where I attended UW Green Bay. And I graduated with a bachelor's in human bio. So I. It wasn't until, you know, 2016, 2017, I really got the desire to, I guess, run for office because I I wasn't seeing action on the national level or the state level. On issues that, you know, my generation younger are passionate about. So issues like climate change, how affordable housing. And affordable mental health treatment and and things like that are, you know, resonate with people my age and younger. And I wanted to create local action to sort of make up for what I wasn't seeing on the state and federal level. Since I've been on the county board supervised, my county board. I introduced and passed a resolution that formed the Brown County Energy Subcommittee. So I'm on that committee and our goal is to basically help Brown County's facilities operations transition to 100% clean energy and allow us to be more efficient and more proactive in preparing for events in the future. I also worked the land conservation department to help increase their cost sharing budget for. Their best practices for farmers so that we can protect our land and water in the area. And I also helped assist UW Extension in putting on a program for for each kid so they could distribute or put together distribute and. Put together wildfire seed. So I I hope to continue my my work there in the future. And yeah, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start our first question and we will start with Dan Thino. The question is, the federal government's American Rescue Plan includes a local fiscal recovery fund of potentially millions of dollars for counties to help deal with the COVID-19 pandemic and its disruptions. How would you think that money should be spent?
Thank you very much. That's a very important question. I think we could have to use that money judiciously. I don't think we can throw it away on one time gimmick programs. I would like to see that money invested in the future. Things that we can do to encourage small businesses. Our small businesses have been really, really hit hard. Many times having to lay off their employees or close their doors. I think we we need to do something to help them. I think we need to take a look at what we can do for climate change, what we can do about this goal that we have of of doing what we can in Brown County for for mitigating the climate change issue. I also think that we need to invest judiciously in infrastructure improvements. Brown County has done Yaleman's job in recent years of attending to some of the infrastructure needs of the county. And beyond that, I think we need to attack some of the ongoing issues that we face. One of the ones that I'm very, very concerned about is the homelessness problem. I don't think that we can solve that particular problem on a a community basis necessarily. I think it's going to take a county or regional basis. And maybe there's something more that we can do to solve that particular problem. There's, there's a host of things that we could do with the money. I just want to make sure that we use those funds, those one time funds judiciously to solve some of the problems on a long term basis. Not something that's going to be put, we're going to be putting money into a program or activity that's not going to have lasting impact on the quality of life that we enjoy in Brown County.
Thank you. Emily Jacobson, if you could please address the question?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't want to try to repeat what Dan said, so I will try and say from my point of view, what what I would be very interested in from from those that I'm talking to. Staffing shortages are something that we need to address. But also daycare and how can we help our working families already in our county be stronger families together? Looking also agreeing with the infrastructure, but also mental health and in the care. Which ties into what Dan was saying about those experiencing homelessness, but also. Mental health services, access to counselors on the county level and and how are our programs being run that supports them? And how can we help with these staff shortages so we can help more people? On top of that, also veteran services and really putting our money and making sure that our veterans are taken care of in our community is really important as well. And I think all of this ties together to affordable housing. We had definitely have a housing shortage here in Brown County. And I would like to see that addressed with affordable housing options for everybody regardless of of their social supports that they have. There is a great need for families to be able to have homes and and everyone should have a roof over their home as well. So, thank you.
Noah Reeve, if you please address the question?
I, again, not to definitely, I absolutely absolutely like lift up what both Dan and Emily said, like talking about affordable housing and supporting those impacted by housing insecurity. Is absolutely critical in the work we do with our ARPA funding. And also those allowable uses of funding, like identifying opportunities for those in our community who have been hit hardest by the pandemic and continue to be hit by it, whether that's frontline healthcare workers or frontline essential workers. Really making sure that we're identifying and bringing folks into this process so we can ensure that out of all the funds we're going to get and all the opportunities we have, that those who are most directly going to be impacted are going to be able to ultimately help guide our decisions collectively. Because there might be 26 of us making that decision, but it ultimately is something that we do as a community. And one that I that has come up from folks who live in more rural parts of Brown County to folks even in my district is the need for steady and successful, like consistent broadband. Especially as we find that virtual learning for a lot of our kids, for people who are now telecommuting, who are working from home, whatever that looks like. There are opportunities within ARPA and that's actually one of the areas that we can prioritize to use as as an allowable use. We can really look at how do we like ensure a standard of it? And already there's a committee that's working on it. It's very possible that, you know, I think there's a big opportunity to use the ARPA funding and that allowable usage to like expand our broadband usage to everyone and make sure that no one gets left behind in Brown County. I also feel that there's opportunities to address healthcare inequity and negative outcomes. I think that's that's another big part of it. And there's also opportunities to provide survivor benefits to those who have loved ones who are take like who were sadly lost to COVID-19 and are trying to deal with those financial repercussions. So I think ultimately it's about who we bring into this moment with us to make the best decisions for everyone. And I think it's an exciting opportunity.
Thank you. Liv Miller, if you'd please address the question?
Absolutely. I agree that these need to be investments, really deciding how we can use this money in a smart way that's going to continue to last as we move forward, continue to have the solution that we discover with this money available to us as we move on. So what am I trying to get out of this money? What is our goal from all of this is first recovery and second prevention. So the next time something like this happens, we're ready. Recovery also, like has been said, small businesses, giving them whatever we can to make sure that people are getting on their feet and being able to provide those living wages for people, making sure that Brown County is a desirable people place for them to come, for them to work and them to spend their lives. And not only survivor benefits, but also people who have long COVID. There's all of these symptoms that are still happening and we don't know everything that's going on with them. So we need to invest in our health department, helping find out what is happening to these people. Where are the long COVID symptoms really lasting? Unfortunately, it's a solid chance that it's going to be in low income areas, people who are already getting hit hardest in all sorts of other areas, finding out how we can help them. And then with prevention, again, really getting into our health department, giving them resources. I really believe that getting to the root of a lot of these issues, we need to involve more social scientists. We need to involve anthropologists who understand what humanity is up to, how we act, how we communicate, those communication experts on how receiving that information really works with us and how dissipating that information, how that's going to be important. So all of these great policies, all of these excellent things that we're working on is communicated well between us and our people. We understand how we can actually help with all of these other issues. And then the next time that something like this happens, maybe a pandemic, maybe just a smaller endemic, we're going to know how to do that. And we're going to learn all the lessons that we got from COVID, being able to apply those and our health department is going to be really ready to go, really help out and save Brown County from another one of these.
Thank you. Tom Freeburg, if you'd please address the question?
Sure. And could you repeat the question, give me a refresher?
Certainly. The federal government's American Rescue Plan includes a local fiscal recovery fund of potentially millions of dollars for counties to help deal with the COVID-19 pandemic and its disruptions. How would you think that money should be spent?
Yeah, thank you. So the main, the main things that have occurred during the pandemic, you know, people are more stressed out, more anxious, more depressed than they've ever been in recent history. You know, Dan had touched on the homeless issue that we have here. And, you know, with the moratorium that expired on on payments for that, you know, that definitely creates an issue where people. You know, they have to pay back everything that, you know, that's that's owed. But, you know, if if you're having employment issues because of, you know, frequent COVID outbreaks and things like that. You know, if things like, things like that really need to be addressed. So, you know, definitely got to increase access and affordability of mental health. I think there definitely should be programs in place that. And a lot of this is just off the cuff, but, you know, I think that the local government should be able to. You know, subsidize local businesses to, you know, pay their employees a little bit more, things like that. I don't know if that is, you know, something that's allowable by those funds, but I think that would be a cool idea. So, yeah, a lot of this is going to be a repeat of what everybody else touched on and then they're right. But, yeah, definitely mental health services, making housing more affordable, but also providing assistance to local businesses and and the renters that, you know, haven't been able to or unable to pay their their bills from, you know, the last few years. So, thank you.
Leanne Kramer, if you'd please address the question?
Thank you. I get I, everybody's comments have been awesome and I agree with everyone. I guess my thing would be to have like an open meeting where people can come or they can contact their supervisor and give their opinion of what they think we should do with that money. What is the best options? I do think that we do need to invest in some infrastructure and the mental health. It somehow almost be like how. Salvation Army gives out like their voucher systems. You know, we could maybe have a voucher system for people who are impacted by COVID and they need assistance paying for their rent or heating, you know. Those types of things, but a voucher system of some sort. But the biggest thing, I guess, is get the input from the residents of the county and and then take all those ideas and try to figure out, I guess, what is the biggest bang for our buck? And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Our second question, we will start with Emily Jacobson. And the question is, is there anything specific you propose for the county that would reduce its carbon footprint, helping us to do what we can in the global effort to improve the environment?
Thank you. I just wanted to write it down so I didn't forget it. You know, I think that the county has made great strides in the fact that we are changing over slowly everything in the county buildings to LED lights and trying to reduce the carbon footprint as much as possible. As we all know, Green Bay and Brown County isn't very walking friendly as other cities are like Madison or Milwaukee. And I know that a lot of people don't utilize the bus system as they could, even though that city run. That's definitely something that could be a partnership between county and city. To be able to, you know, promote people to get on, use your feet more, use your bikes more. But Green Bay in general as well, speaking in my district, we have a lot of issues with traffic and cars not, you know, being so friendly to pedestrians. And I feel safer personally bicycling on the sidewalk and you're not supposed to do that. But if that's where my kids and I feel safe, that's something that, you know, we can work with, you know, our aldermen and see what can happen. And I think it's really great to be able to bring city and county together for certain things that are going to benefit our constituents, to show them that we can work together. I really think that the county. I really think that the county can make great strides in, you know, working on different ways that we can help. But we need, we need input. I don't like to just make things up and say, hey, this is what I think. It's really up to the constituents and what they they're looking for. I think being able to have access to the Fox River Trail is fantastic in our area, also the access to downtown and all the walking paths that have happened, but really getting people outside more is going to help reduce that. And really helping them enjoy what we have to offer, especially with the UW extension and the community gardens and things like that. So I think it's a community thing that we all have to come together for, but it's something that we need to hear from our constituents on what they would like to see done as well.
Thank you. Noah Reeve, if you'd please address the question.
Yes, I I just want to thank everyone who was on the county board when and especially Tom and Emily for the work they did on the energy subcommittee. That's very exciting and that's like our first step. So for those who may or may not know, like Brown County has passed a commitment to one hundred percent clean energy in the last term, which is an extremely exciting first step. And like Emily laid out, there's so many opportunities that can be used to that we could take in. There's no shortage of opportunities we have to not only mitigate what we do as a community in terms of like our carbon emissions, but also like how we can make our community work for everyone. You know, we've talked about public transport already, we've talked about you know, there's opportunities like as we have to replace vehicles in the fleet, whether that's for for whatever purpose in a county, you know, in a county capacity, there's opportunities to like make sure that those vehicles are energy efficient or green and are built here in Wisconsin because there are like, there are opportunities to do that in our state, which is fantastic. There's talk like we have the opportunity and like in my district and District Four, we are right on the banks of the Fox of the East River, which is experiencing those once in a generation floods every year, it seems. And there are people who are hurting. There are people who need relief and ultimately the city of Green Bay has hired a resiliency and sustain like resiliency and sustainability coordinator that works through through the rainwater grant program. And so there's opportunities to like connect on that level too and like provide real support. And to see us do that at a county level to provide like a resiliency coordinator that can help coordinate all this. And all this comes down to, there's so much we can do, but we need a plan. Climate action planning is a critical tool that we have in our toolbox. And as the energy subcommittee goes forward with continued benchmarking and opportunities to see where our areas of greatest improvement are, I'm really looking forward to being involved in that long term climate action plan to make sure that all of these great ideas come together in a way that has maximum effectiveness and is done quickly.
Thank you. Liv Miller, if you'd please address the question.
This is really the ticket for me. I love our clean energy pledge. I too am so grateful to the board for passing this. This is such a huge thing. In order to get to that zero waste energy, really switching over first, I do want to reduce our overall energy. Then we convert everything that's left into renewables. There's really exciting opportunities to reduce our total energy usage in our buildings. For example, we're looking at new, more efficient ways to just have our HVAC systems work. We can actually reuse waste heat from some of these machines, cycle them back through the buildings. We don't have to create so much of that heat. Simple things like replacing our windows, having double doors so the drafts don't come in. All of these things are very doable, very fixable things that I think we should be investing in. We need to be working, it's a complicated situation with WPS to get more wind energy into the system. These are just easy conversations to begin, sitting down with people in the state who are working on these things, just seeing how does this work? What can we get started on? What might need to change on your end that we can be talking to our constituents, to be talking to other legislators, really getting everyone involved and seeing how we can get more renewable energy on the grid? And I also absolutely agree, switching our fleets over to electric as soon as possible, as soon as makes sense to really make sure that they are also plugging in that good green energy into the vehicles and not just plugging in carbon made electricity. I also really want to focus on a little bit of vocational training for people who want to get into this industry. It's a really new thing to be updating all of our systems and people who may not have been involved in this type of thing, don't necessarily have this kind of work. The county can support those people. Get ready to move into these jobs that are going to have great living wage jobs. They're going to be able to really connect and like I said, work towards something together as a community. And when all of these people know they're doing something to really get us there, not just reducing waste, but proactively building towards something, it's going to help all of us get motivated to get there.
Thank you. Tom Freeberg, if you address the question.
Yeah. So I mentioned earlier that I introduced and and got formed a the Brown County Energy Subcommittee, which, you know, pledges to reduce Brown County's energy usage and you know, transition to a hundred percent clean, sustainable energy, you got twenty fifty. So right now the committee is in the data collection phase. We've met with all the department heads. We finally just got three years of energy data from WPS. So other members on the board are going to be sort of pouring through that, identifying which buildings, you know, are bleeding the most energy, things like that. So we're on the information gathering phase. Going forward, once we identify the problem areas, that's when we start, you know, going for the low hanging fruit. One thing that a lot of the buildings don't have are modern heating controls, things like, you know, thermostats that change at the by the temperature of the day or based on occupancy, things like that. So that's a simple area to go for. A lot of the bigger projects are going to be like providing updated buildings for facilities and public works. For example, they have a very large storage shed for storing all their vehicles, which is heated. But in order to get out one vehicle, they need to basically move half the entire fleet out of the building, keeping the door open, wasting a lot of energy. So there are a lot of bigger ticket items that we're going to have to have to address in future. Yeah, so there's a lot of things to consider. On on a larger note, I think that Brown County, especially on the new Harbor District coming along is going to be poised to be a leader in alternative energy recycling. There are, I don't believe there are really any recycling facilities for solar in the in the country. And solar is going to be huge, especially as those panels degrade and need to be recycled and replaced. So I think that would be a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Leanne Kramer, would you please address the question?
Sure. Everybody's comments have been excellent. I guess, like Tom was saying, you know, the biggest thing is looking at all of the buildings within the county. Just like your own home, you know, you add insulation and you update your windows and doors and you know, to try to cut your energy costs in any way that you can to keep the energy levels down. So that would be one of the first ones, you know, big thing is just trying to make our buildings and with the thermostats to give, you know, those, they're awesome when you can program them to kick down to a certain temp overnight and whatever. So that that's very helpful. Would like to see some more information regarding, you know, the wind turbines and possibly, you know, see more about the electric vehicles that, you know, it's, it's all sounds great, but some of the vehicles, it's like, you know, like our for the sheriff's department. You know, I don't know if it would be sustainable to have electronic electric vehicles for that department. We need, basically, we need those cars on the road almost twenty four seven. So but those are some of the ideas, but top, the biggest thing is to start with the buildings within the county.
Thank you. Dan Thino, if you'd please address the question.
Thank you, Jane. I'm not going to repeat all of the great ideas that have been laid out so far and I thank everybody for their suggestions. And I think it's very commendable that the county, in fact, is moving proactively and trying to address the issue of reducing the carbon footprint in the environment. When I purchased my home here on the east side of Green Bay thirteen years ago, the first thing I did was get energy efficient windows and insulated doors. My house was an energy sieve. And I think if we can encourage people to to apply for programs, there's many programs out there, most notably the state energy programs that are there to provide incentives for people to modernize their homes by the way of of providing them to be more energy efficient, I think would be good. Without repeating all of the things that have been mentioned before, I think my membership on the county board could add a different dimension to the whole issue of climate change and energy efficiency and some of these issues that I think we're all concerned about. And that is because I was a state senator for four terms, I know my way around Madison. I know what it takes to address public policy issues before the state legislature and what it takes to work through the bureaucracy to get things done. And that added dimension as a member of the Brown County Board of Supervisors could be very instrumental in helping us achieve the goals that have been set already by the Brown County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Moving on to our third question, we will start with Noah Reeve. And the question is, the county board was approached a couple of years ago about becoming a sanctuary county for guns. That would have given sheriffs and other law enforcement in the county the right to ignore state or federal laws that may not have even existed yet, but might limit gun control, gun rights. Do you think it's appropriate for the county board to override state and federal laws this way?
I think it's very much a, it is a case by case basis. In the case of public safety and keeping folks safe and making sure that every in our community has a space and can feel valued and doesn't have to be concerned about, you know, potential violence against them. I think it's important to listen to those who are in public health above us who are making those recommendations. But I also think that there's opportunities to really consider. And I'll use an example. So let's say that in the case of sanctuary cities, clear, I clearly would not support that for a number of reasons. But there are other opportunities where it would be potential for a county board or a city council to provide protections for individuals of a like an actual protected class of which gun ownership is not a protected class and that's in the same sense of like a title seven or title nine. I think it's really important to talk about, you know, we talk about LGBTQIA rights in this community. We talk about gender identity and we talk about a lot of things and we know that that is not a protected class currently. So you can be fired, you can be unlawfully terminated if you hold a nonconforming gender identity or you identify as trans or you you do not have the same protections under the law that cis folks do. And so that it would be an opportunity where where I would say it would be important that we step up and provide protection for folks in our community. But in the case of sanctuary cities, no, I would not support that. And again, it's a case by case basis. There are times when local governments have to step up and use their power and their privilege and their platform to promote really positive things that are going to help all of our citizens in our community. And there's other times that we have to use that power to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe and making sure that we're not putting folks in needless harms way.
Liv Miller, if you'd please respond to the question.
The way that I'm hearing the question is, do I support the county board overriding state and federal law? This is an issue of stability. This is an issue of democracy. The way that our constitution is set up is for that balance. There's no reason for the county to set up a court fight to take away from that stability, to take away that trust in government where we're constantly being tossed from left to right and right to left and forward and back. Because these decisions keep swinging back and forth because people really do overstep their bounds. I think it's the job of the county board to work with state and federal law to really create something for our society that they understand, that they can follow and that they can trust. And by not spending time sending us to court, creating proposals that are going to get rejected, that are going to get turned down, I can still use my voice. We can still use our collective voice to support those things. We can support having some sort of a sanctuary city versus these things and say that this is what we believe in. I value the rights of immigrants, for example, and we want this to be a safe place for them without blatantly just throwing state and federal law to the side. I believe that we would be better off using our platform to share our values, to share support and to work within what we already have and not to cause disarray and not to cause chaos among our people, just to make them hate hate the way that things are set up. Stop trusting the way the government works, say that this isn't working, why is it getting thrown back? That isn't helping anyone. I don't believe that we should be throwing our citizens into just confusion. We want to offer that stability. We want to offer that true democracy where we're setting things up the way that it's supposed to be.
Thank you. Tom Freeberg, if you'd please respond to the question.
So a lot of what I'm hearing is that it's and it and I'm going to echo is that it's the issue is about safety at the end of the day. With the sanctuary cities, you know, it would, you know, it'd be like if the federal government said, hey, you can't carry your guns from the, you know, time of nine to five, whatever. And then Wisconsin was like now or our county was like, we're not going to follow that, you know. That is, you know, understandable, but that's not what's happening. I think that, for example, in Florida, I believe the governor prevented, you know, municipalities or schools from putting forth their own mask mandates. It goes back to safety, you know, I don't think that if you know, if Evers did an about face and decided that nope, nowhere can nowhere can mass be put up anywhere, you know, then then yeah, that is an issue. And I think a time where bucking what the state mandates or, you know, puts forth is is right. It's it's about public health. And you have responsibilities in your community to protect others and provide a safe spot for everybody. So, yeah, it you know, it depends a lot on what the issue is, but in terms of a sanctuary city for, you know, guns and things like that, I don't think it's necessary and I wouldn't support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanne Kramer, if you'd please respond to the question.
I am against, I guess I go back to the Constitution, Second Amendment, the right to bear arms. I sometimes I think we go, we we put too many like thoughts and laws, like the sanctuary, you know, naming Brown County a sanctuary county or whatever. That's why we have law enforcement to, you know, if we have an issue with somebody, you know, shooting people, but going back to the very beginning, we take an oath that we're going to uphold the constitution and part of, you know, that's the right to bear arms is our Second Amendment. So I would, I would disagree with it.
Thank you. Dan Thino, would you please respond to the question?
Well, I'll give you this example. When I was mayor of Ashland, we had for many years been allowing the overflow of untreated sewage into Lake Superior to the tune of eighty five million gallons a year. I had a proposal before the city council to build a new sewage treatment plant and also to take care of some of the problems with the piping in the city. I had a very difficult time with some of my city council members in saying, we don't care what the state says. We're Ashland, we're different. We're not going to pay attention to the DNR. So the only way I won that battle and I won it was to call in a member of the DNR staff in Northern Wisconsin to speak to the city council on the issue. And the person that was most vocal saying we shouldn't solve this environmental issue asked a perfect question. He said to the DNR person, what are you going to do if we thumb our nose at the DNR in the state of Wisconsin and don't build a new sewage treatment plant? And the perfect answer from the DNR guy was, we're going to fine you ten thousand dollars a day until you do. Well, that was the end of the battle. I won the the day we built the new sewage treatment plant. We stopped putting untreated sewage into Lake Superior. But that is just But that is just one point of the fact that this whole notion of being different, that we, we don't have to follow state laws, or we don't have to follow federal laws is absolute bunk. We are part of the state of Wisconsin. We need to follow the laws of the state of Wisconsin. And if we don't like the laws, as I said before, send me down to Madison as a representative of Brown County and we'll try to change the laws. But as long as the laws are there, we as a county must follow the directives of the state of Wisconsin. All municipalities, all counties are creations of the state.
Thank you. Emily Jacobson, if you'd please respond to the question.
Yeah, I, I also agree that county is about checks and balances. We shouldn't be taking on state or national issues that are just well wishes of things. I'm not somebody who likes to waste taxpayer money paying for lawsuits and litigation. I'm someone who votes on things that are measurable. Is it tangible? Is there a point to us becoming a sanctuary city? These are just some of the questions that I would have. We're putting our, if we're putting our name behind something, is it for the betterment of our community? Will it help our neighbors? If it's just something to just put our name behind because that sounds great, I'm not, I'm not really gonna be interested in that. So it has to be something that's gonna benefit our community. And we have to be able to work with Madison and our federal government as well when it needs to be done. But for us to try to overstep those boundaries, I think is asking for a lot of taxpayer money to be wasted and I'm not interested in that.
Thank you. Moving on to our fourth question and we'll start our fourth question with Liv Miller. And it is, as of January twenty-seventh, the Brown County COVID nineteen dashboard shows case activity remains at its highest level critical. Military staff are at a local hospital to support the medical staff because of so many COVID cases. At the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one county board meeting, a Brown County physician requested proactive measures by local government to lessen COVID infection in our community. What do you believe is the responsibility of the county board to reduce the risk and impact of a pandemic on its residents?
I was actually there at that county board meeting, hearing that doctor talk. It was absolutely heartbreaking to hear what it's like inside of the hospital right now, to hear what he's going through. First of all, with just the stress of any individual patient and then having to take on longer hours, the staffing shortages that are happening, so they aren't able to support each other and that togetherness, that connectedness, that hey, we're all really working in this together. They're feeling that be torn apart too, because people are just worn out because they aren't able to support each other. They can hardly support themselves. We need to be prioritizing our frontline healthcare workers. They're saving lives every single day. And they're having a hard time doing it. They're having a hard time keeping up. I absolutely do believe it is the job of the county board to step up and provide more precautionary measures. If elected, I really believe that we need to be deferring to the health department more. This is something that I believe delegating authority is the right thing to do, going back to when I said the stability of having issues brought up and just have it answered clearly by the people who know what they're talking about. Our scientists, particularly our public health scientists, who understand how the disease travels, but also understands how people behave when they are out in public, how people are acting, what they do. And so what these regulations, what type of mask it needs to be, what type of building it needs to be, if there's a certain capacity. All of these questions, I don't believe that needs to have a vote by the county board every single time. We should be deferring to the people who know what they're talking about. And it's a job of the county board to give that authority to the people who deserve it and the people who need it to offer that stability. And then back to checks and balances. If things ever got out of hand, which I don't think they would, we'd always be able to rein it back and take that vote and say, okay, this is out of hand. But until that happens, give it to the professionals, let them lead the way.
Thank you. Tom Freiberg, if you'd please respond.
Yes, so I would definitely be in favor of, you know, doing similar things, you know, to Dane County where they are mandating that masks and all businesses. I think, yes, we should be listening to our medical professionals. They've been telling us from day one that the, you know, social distancing, masking up, getting vaccinated, that those are all things that will reduce the spread of this virus. It won't get rid of it completely, but it will greatly reduce it. And I think what we're seeing now in our hospital system is a result of the majority of this state not taking the pandemic seriously, you know, believing that it's just the flu that, you know, because it has a low mortality rate that, you know, it, it's not highly infectious and not killing tons of people. So I think that because we live in a society, there are responsibilities that come with that. And that the least that any of us can do is put a piece of cloth over our mouth to catch any virus particles that are gonna be coming out. You know, I, I like, I like to use the analogy myself that, you know, if we, if we had another terrorist attack, you know, we're not gonna be opening up our Airbnbs and renting out to the terrorists so they can plan the next attack, right? Now we're gonna be preventing that, making sure that they can't plan another attack. And that's how we should do this virus is that you know, it's killing two thousand people a day in this entire country, you know, we got over eight hundred and seventy thousand people dead already. We need to be doing more and with our hospitals being overwhelmed and overburdened and the, the staff there, you know, at the end of their rope, basically. We need to do more as a society and as residents of Brown County to protect our local healthcare system and our residents.
Thank you. Leanne Kramer, if you'd please respond to the question.
I disagree on the man, the mask mandates. I, I understand hospitals can be overwhelmed. But I'm against the mask mandate. Number one, it's, it goes back to, you know, laws. There's a reason why laws were, were put on the books, why we have the constitution. It goes back, you know, a lot of it has to do with people going out when they're sick. Well, yeah. That's because people are just not being self-conscious or worried about other people. I mean, like if you had the regular flu, you wouldn't be out, at least you would hope not, out walking around. You'd be home resting, taking care of yourself and until you got better, then you'd go out. So, you know, I don't mind the, the six feet and whatever, but there's medical reasons to that. It, it affects, like myself, a mask just really hampers my breathing ability. As, you know, so it's like, and going back to the mental health part, a lot of people are really missing smiles and just seeing people face to face. And when you're out and about and you got somebody with a mask on, you can't see if they're smiling, if they're happy, if they're sad. So, yeah, I am totally against the mask mandate, but and I had, I guess, a year ago when we were fighting this whole mask mandate, we had issues with the, with the, the county health department. And I don't know if I'm really feeling all that confident with the leadership in that department.
Thank you. Dan Thino, if you'd please respond to the question.
First of all, I think we ought to listen to the doctors, not the politicians. This pandemic is not going to go away by just wishing it away. We all need to take steps to protect each other. I just recently had I guess I'd call it an argument, it's certainly a, a strong conversation with an individual who said, well, this is my freedom not to wear a mask, not to do social distancing, not to get vaccinated. And I said to this individual, yeah, I, I accept the, the freedom argument to a point. If you get COVID and you give it to your neighbor and your neighbor dies, you have just taken a hundred percent freedom away from that neighbor. Is that the type of freedom that you're talking about? We can't solve this issue at the local level. It's gonna take statewide and national action to solve this pandemic that we're living through. I, I personally am very close to the losses that people are experiencing. Three weeks ago tomorrow, I lost a first cousin of mine to COVID. Three days after that, I got a call from another cousin saying a second cousin of mine died. Both of them were in their fifties. Both of them had wives and teenage kids. Both of them were very successful and contributed to their communities. They're gone. People have got to take this issue seriously. And I think the, the best thing that we can do is help our, our hospitals, help our healthcare providers the best we can. And also the county must do what it can to promote social distancing, masking and getting vaccinated.
Thank you. Emily Jacobson, if you'd please respond to the question.
Yeah, so I'm, I wanna bring it back to, I think, what the original question was, which is what is the responsibility of the county board with COVID? And I, being on the Health and Human Services Committee during my, my county board supervisor, District Five, some of the things that I think were very impactful that the county is currently doing, we have vaccination buses that can go to different locations, to employers if needed, to low income areas where transportation may be an issue to receive vaccinations. And then they can come, the bus can come back. You know, the twenty-eight days later for the second dose and those people don't have to worry about transportation issues. They have different signs in multiple languages so that everyone in our community has access to the information on how they can get vaccinated, how to socially distance, how to wear a mask properly. I think the county is doing fantastic on those fronts. I think it's up to us also as county board supervisors and as people in our community, as leaders in our community to lead by example, to get vaccinated yourself, to wear a mask. You know, even if you personally don't like them or do like them, I, again, I wanna protect my neighbors and I wanna do what's right for them as well. So I will mask up around other people. I do wanna commend our health department. They're doing the best they can, given the circumstances that they have. The contact tracers have been fantastic. I, when my family had COVID, we were contracted by three different contract tracers in one day. Like they were on it and I was just so happy to see how people are trying to do this. But also, I work firsthand with a vulnerable population. I work with pregnant women. I work with newborns. I see the impact mentally and the strain on our hospital system firsthand every day when I'm working with these families and the data that's coming out about women who have COVID or get the COVID shot, that, that is my job. And so I am always up to date with what's happening with that. But I see it firsthand and we have to do better for our community. I think the county is doing the best that they can, but there are always things we can be making better for ourselves. And so that's what we wanna focus on is how do we just keep moving forward so that we can keep supporting our community?
Thank, thank you. Noah Reeve, if you'd please respond to the question.
So, as this is definitely like a field of interest. As someone who is immune compromised, one, it's been a very challenging. It's been just like, wanna like, start by saying, one, this has been a challenging coming up on two years now for everyone and like the very real pain that is happening in our frontline healthcare workers who are absolutely been gone through surge after surge after surge. And to answer the question of, do we have an obligation as a county board and like our government, like we should be proactively taking steps? And there is though, and, and there are those opportunities. I agree that this can't just happen. That one, by no means can us, can we in Brown County end COVID. That's by no means something that we can do. That being said, as state and federal governments continue to roll out the responses and continue to do all they can, it's important that we take proactive steps as well. There's funding to decide in like, in the ARP, in ARPA funding to really talk about community education for vaccines because we know vaccines are our best effort to get out of this woods permanently. Or at least to a place where it is no longer impacting the full population the way it currently is, overtaxing our hospital system and putting those who are immune compromised or those with comorbidities at risk. I think it's also really important to really talk about, we need to do everything we can as a county and it's more than just a personal choice. We have the power as a county to like, make policy. It's what make, like, it's what's so important about governing. We govern in the best interests of our constituents and our people and our community. And we often do that for those who are most at risk of a policy. So I would support mandatory masking in county buildings. I think it's an important step that we can demonstrate and take. In addition to like talking about vaccine education for communities that are traditionally hesitant of like, like American healthcare systems due to some systemic racism and issues that have been felt in our community for a long time. And there's just opportunities as well to do all we can to support those frontline workers, whether that's through proactive premium pay or making sure that we're supporting them.
Thank you. Our next question, question number five, we'll start with Tom Freiberg. And it reads, do you believe that voter fraud is common enough to make it a problem in Brown County? Especially in the area of mail-in voting?
Uh, no. There's no, there's been no evidence from the past election or previous elections that voter fraud is a significant issue that requires more laws to combat. I believe that with a lot of the new voter laws coming out across the country that end up restricting voting, making it a little bit more difficult to get to the ballot box. I think we should be expanding voter access, allowing the expansion of absentee ballots or you know, just being able to vote from home. But no, I, the voter fraud is largely a something that is pushed by politicians at the state and federal level. There is no evidence to back it up. Bigger issues are going to be electoral fraud in those states where you know, it's becoming more restrictive for people to vote. I think that is a, is a larger issue, is when the people that are in charge make laws that make it inherently more difficult to get to the ballot box. So anything that expands it, you know, with, you know, obvious checks and balances, I think would be good. But no, I don't believe voter fraud is a serious issue.
Leanne Kramer, if you'd please respond to the question.
Uh, yes, I, I would like, I'm gonna be like, this is just way off, but I'd like to go back to when I first started voting. You went to the, you went to the polls and voted. And there was no mail-in. The only time you could do like an absentee ballot would be if you were gonna be out on vacation or you were in the military. That was the only time you got to do your absentee or, you know, the mail-in. And I personally think there's a, a lot of fraud. I know personally here in, in the city of Green Bay, there was quite a bit of fraud where one person got nine ballots. One person sent in nine ballots. So there is fraud and we need to have people going to the polls and showing of ID. You need to have an ID to drive. You need to have an ID to buy liquor, cigarettes. Whatever the case is, there's no reason why you can't go to the poll and show an ID to vote. Absolutely no reason. That's it.
Right, thank you. Dan Thino, if you'd please respond to the question.
Well, I continue to be appalled, absolutely appalled at the attack on democracy that we're seeing in this country and in state legislatures across the country. Joe Biden won the election two years ago. There have been over sixty court cases in state and federal courts, many of which were before federal judges that the former president Donald Trump appointed. The Trump Organization is oh for sixty-some in winning cases. It, it, it's just, this poor, deplorable that we are seeing state legislatures across the country clamping down on the ability of people to vote. I compliment the legal woman voters for putting this issue in the, in the forefront as a major issue to concentrate in protecting the rights of our people in this democratic society. I think the, the bottom line, as I see it, in many of these pieces of legislation there I think the the bottom line, as I see it, in many of these pieces of legislation there are before our state legislatures. Is to. Try to dampen the turnout of minorities. And I think that is despicable, absolutely despicable. We need to encourage more participation in our democratic institutions. We need to make it easier for people to cast their vote. And any legislation that goes contrary to that belief, to me, is an affront of democracy.
Emily Jacobson, if you please respond to the question?
Yeah, I would say that we need to be expanding voting rights, not taking them away. Hear say stories of people getting certain ballots. If somebody turned in multiple ballots, only one is counted. That is how the law goes. I trust our county clerks that they are doing their job properly. Stories are not proof. Stories are stories and that just leads to propaganda. Again, I am somebody who says. I need teeth, I need measurables, I need proof. Hear say stories are not proof. That being said, also, there are reasons that people can't get to the ballots. There's transportation issues, there's childcare issues, there's work issues. So so saying that you can go to a polling place and just show your ID and that's it. I agree with what what, you know, the, we've already heard before. Absentee voting and early voting, those are options that expand the reach for people to participate in this. And they are just as safe as showing up on the day of and showing your ID and voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah Reeve, if you'd please take the question?
There was no fraud in the 2020 elections. There is, that is a, that's false. It's as simple as it's what isn't false, though is unfortunately what has been referred to by a number of folks here. Dan, you know, Tom and Emily have all brought up that there are currently bills circulating in our own state houses. That would significantly impact the ability of our community members, not only to, you know, participate. But even have that opportunity to participate. And I think it's really critical that we use our, you know, our platform as county board supervisors. To support one very robust election infrastructure and do all we can to support our election heroes who have, in the middle of a pandemic. Oversaw the highest turnout that Brown County has ever seen before, which is something we should all be celebrating. We should celebrate that across race. We should celebrate that across party, across across any part of our lives. Like, this is not something we should be debating amongst like, this isn't a partisan issue. This is something we should celebrate. Because people, Democrats, Republicans, independents, all came together in this really exciting moment in American history. And we had an amazing amount of turnout. Our elections were strong. They were robust. They were transparent. And now is our opportunity as a county board to continue expanding that, not to rest and say, congr, we did such a great job in 2020. But look at opportunities to continue expanding voter access and making sure that more people than ever are able to participate in our democracy. Because that's how we get stronger communities. That's how we get stronger policies. And I just think it's so critical that we do all we can as a board, whether that's from, and I know there's court cases pending on this, but continuing to expand. Ballot access through drop boxes, doing our best to like encourage early vote locations, going out to communities that are traditionally underserved. And encouraging them, which is obviously the work that the League has done for a long time. And I think it's just so critical that we shouldn't be afraid of these attacks. We should now more than ever be doubling down on our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Liv Miller, if you please take the question?
Yeah, the answer is no. Our elections were safe. Our elections are safe and I do not believe that conspiracies deserve any airtime. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. I'd like to take one last question. And we'll start with Leanne Kramer. The Greater Green Bay Community Housing Initiative Task Force issued a report in fall of 2021. Showing that Brown County saw an increase of 30% in people experiencing homelessness from 2014 to 2019. How can the Brown County Board proactively respond to lessen increased rates of homelessness in our county? Leanne?
That's a huge issue. For the county, the cities in this area. One of the things that I would, you know, I've seen, I believe it's down in the Kansas City area. Is they make the tiny homes and they make little villages. And they may not be huge houses to live in. But at least it's a start and it's better than, you know, living under a bridge or, you know. Under a cardboard box. So I guess we'd need, you know, that going back to the very first question. You know, with some of that COVID money would be to try to maybe explore. Finding some additional ways to provide housing to people in that are homeless. And give them some options, you know. To get a roof over their head and to stay warm. Because it is, you know, I feel bad, especially with the cold snap that we just went through. So. Whatever we can try to do to get people in affordable housing and a roof over their heads is something that we really need to work at.
Dan Thino, if you please take the question?
Well, as I said before, this is one of the issues that I would really like to get my hands around. If elected to the Brown County Board of Supervisors in District Five. It's a huge problem. I don't think it can be solved just at the the local level. It has to be solved at the regional level. If Green Bay is is embarking on programs to address the homeless issue. And Ashwabanon and DePere and other communities around us are not doing anything. The only thing that's gonna happen is those people that are without a home. For whatever reason are going to come to Green Bay and exasperate the problem within the city. The county itself cannot alone do a do. A good job of addressing this issue if we have homeless people coming in from the adjacent counties. Which is occurring right now. Providing people that are homeless, for whatever reasons, if it's escaping domestic violence. Unemployment, alcohol and drug abuse and mental. Problems. Just giving them food or a shelter is not gonna solve the baseline problems. That's a temporary bandage approach. We need to invest in in social services and professional services to get at the baseline problem. Of why people are homeless in the first place. Mental illness is certainly at the top of the list. That's one of the major factors why we have people on the streets. What are we doing as a county? What is our health department doing to address the mental health issues of people that are homeless? We've got to attack those problems and until we attack those problems. Simply providing housing or food handouts is not gonna solve the problem.
Emily Jacobson, if you could please respond?
Darn it, Dan, you took my answer. I will just elaborate on that. So there is a Brown County Homeless and Housing Coalition. And they, their job is to provide leadership in the development and like advocacy and coordination with community strategies to prevent homelessness. And if we look at, if we think about it in perspective, and I know nobody wants to hear a statistic. That one in four children in our Green Bay School District lives at a poverty level. And one in 25 is actually experiencing homelessness. And that doesn't mean living in a cardboard box under the bridge. That means they're couch surfing, they're living in garages, they're living in their cars. These are things that we don't want to think about as Brown County, but we need to. And and I have to reiterate Dan's point because this was my point. Properly funding our shelters is fine and dandy, but if we're not properly funding our mental health services and the social workers. And in working proactively by pooling our resources like New Cap and House of Hope and Freedom House. And in all of the different resources that are already available, the Howe Community Resource Center. You know, if we're not pooling all of them together and and saying, how can we as a coalition work together to to do this? We have to make sure these families have what they need regardless of how they got in the situation that they're in. If we just give them a house over their head, that's only solving 5% of their problem. We need to be able to work collaboratively from the ground up and figure out how we can get them whole again. Thank you.
Noah Reeve, if you please respond?
I I feel like we do. We're a government entity that can provide support for people who desperately need it, need to take that on. And homeless, like folks who experience housing insecurity. As it's been mentioned, it is a complex layered situation. It's not, it's never just one thing that drives homelessness and housing insecurity. But looking at Alice's reports and like how many of our neighbors in Wisconsin are just one. $400 expense away from being in the exact same situation. It's critical to understanding what is driving that. And in a lot of ways, that's why it's so critical that we do support those as. We do support those folks who are really, who are experiencing acute homelessness and those. And really the symptoms that come along with it. I think it's also really important that we look at the work that the county is already doing, like we talked about. The racism as a public health crisis declaration that was passed, like. Again, when we know, what we know about those who experience homelessness, they are more likely to be not white. They are more likely to be LGBTQIA in terms of identity. So it's important that as we are going through and understanding these, why this is happening. That we're taking an intersectional approach because there's a big reason why not only are, why kids are so impacted. The the highest driving force for youth homelessness is an LGBTQIA identity. And it's really important that all this work has to be done together. It has to be done intersectionally. Again, there's ARPA funding that is available, whether it's housing vouchers, whether it's support going to centers, whatever that might be. I think it's an amazing opportunity through ARPA to fully expand and like bring those most impacted, like Emily has mentioned, and those that she works with. And bring them into this governing process and making sure that we are addressing their core concerns to the best of our ability. And sending a message to state and federal officials that they need to do better as well.
Liv Miller, if you'd please take the question?
I feel like when a lot of people talk about this problem, they kind of turn these real humans with goals and dreams. Who love and want to be loved like into objects for saying the word problem all the time. Like, we're gonna get them to go where we want them to go and we're gonna get them to do what we want them to do, so like they're not a menace to society. I want to help them help themselves, right? I said they have goals and dreams. We just want to give them the opportunity to go after those things and just grow themselves up. One of the ways to do that, I mentioned at the beginning, our libraries are such a valuable resource. Going in, not only being able to stay warm, get connected with inspiring literature, maybe something that they read as a kid. Maybe one of their parents or family member's favorite book, but also the Internet Job Resource Centers. I know our librarians are excellent at helping people out, finding the resources they need, connecting, things like that. Also, getting our libraries even better. I recently saw something about getting a cute little baby crib right next to the computer. If a homeless mom doesn't know how to, walks in. Baby crying everywhere, doesn't know how to like get into the computer, feels like she's a problem. We need to let these people know that they are not a problem. They are residents of Brown County and we care about them and we want to help them get where they want to go. The other thing I want to mention on homelessness is crime and recidivism. It's so hard to not continue committing crimes. Just because you're that desperate, just because they don't have their needs. One of the ways to take care of that, people getting evicted, they don't have lawyers to defend themselves. We can have essentially a public defender for people getting evicted. We can fund this. So that there is someone or maybe just getting private firms to do it to realize and check in. Hey, are they getting evicted legally? What are their defenses? What are their options? People don't have that. We can do that for them. Lastly, treatment courts for drug, alcohol, mental health, not sending the people back to prison, not punishing them for having these issues. Again, encouraging them, we believe in you. We're just helping you take care of these issues by yourself.
Tom Freiberg, if you'd please address the question?
Yeah, everybody's got really, really banger answers. Those are all good. I think that I'm gonna put a different twist on it. So, you know, Dan had mentioned that, and you had mentioned the question, that homelessness has been increasing. Especially to Brown County. And I, for the homeless, you know, they don't always stay in one spot. They're going to go to areas where they think they have the best chance of just living. You know, Green Bay is known for having, you know, fairly affordable housing prices. And I think that instead of viewing the homeless. And not saying that anybody views homeless people as a problem, but homelessness is the problem. So supporting policies that address homelessness. That train, like everybody else mentioned, job train, it gets them into jobs, but also attracting new companies to the area. That can hire, you know, these a lot more people. So I think we should view this as an opportunity for the people that are coming here that are homeless. You know, we should make Green Bay more welcoming. Because if the people are coming here, they know they have a better chance of success and I think we should foster that. If people are coming here because they are homeless, you know, we should give them the opportunity to get out of homelessness. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Well, this ends our questions and so it's time now for each candidate to offer a two-minute closing statement. And we will begin with you, Dan Thino.
Well, I'm not gonna take two minutes. I just want to thank the League of Women Voters to, for sponsoring this this forum. I think it's a great public service. I also want to thank all the people that are running this year, even my two opponents. Liv, good for you. It's important that people participate in democracy. It's important that we encourage candidates to get out there and put their issues forward. The one thing I am concerned about in local politics as of recent is that some candidates come with ideological agendas. Either liberal, very liberal or very conservative. I think that in my experience in being a mayor and being a state senator. The way that we get things done is for liberals and conservatives, Republicans and Democrats. To can talk to each other, first of all, and to compromise and to move forward with. Programs and activities that move society forward. And I think that one of the the real stains on our democracy right now is the polarization we're seeing in the political process. Where Republicans and Democrats, liberals and conservatives, don't even talk to each other. That's a serious, serious issue. And we're seeing that partisan polarization creeping into the city council. And the county board. I think it's a real issue that we gotta be very, very concerned about. I was fairly successful in my political past by reaching out to people across the aisle. And trying to develop compromises to move our state or our local units of government forward. That's what we really need to have. Again, congratulations to all of the candidates running and thank you again to the League of Women Voters.
Welcome. Emily Jacobson, if you'd please offer your closing statement?
Yeah, again, I I will not, I might take my two minutes as well, but this has been great. I really love getting to to get to know everybody on the forum today and everyone that joined us. Thank you for for watching with us today. You know, even even to our opponents, like Noah and I are are people who can talk to each other. And at the end of the day, we're still gonna be neighbors. So it's it's for the best of who our constituents think will be the best for the job. And we will still support each other regardless in the end. You know, we are a nonpartisan board and I think that that gets really jumbled these days of of when you're knocking doors. People asking, are you blue or red? And I say purple and then they get confused. My personal agendas don't matter. I am a voice for my community at the end of the day and that is nonpartisan. So I want input from both sides. Help me see both sides and and that will help me vote the best for my constituents. So I really hope that if there are those of you in District Four, please reach out. I would love to connect. I would love to get to know our neighbors and I'm sure we'll see each other as the weather warms up as well. And good luck to everybody in the primary. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah Reeve, if you'd please offer your closing comments?
I again, just want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for organizing this. I know it's every time we have local elections, it's always about going to these, these really amazing opportunities to share our collective visions. For what we feel that our community can be and what it means when we come together to do that. And I'm just so appreciative of that and everyone who took the time to watch tonight. And just thank you to everyone and every opponent who, and everyone who's. just thank you to everyone and every opponent who, and everyone who's running, who is able to be here. I think it's amazing to share, and nothing strengthens a democracy like having really awesome conversations about how great our county can be when we do work together. So, again, I just, I feel it's so important with what we do as local government bodies, like in this very challenging moment that we exist in, where it feels like state and federal levels, that feels like the promised relief doesn't get there because there's gridlock, there's frustrations, there's challenges. And what I truly love about local government is the opportunity to dive in and like really fight for the changes that we can make in our community. We can't change the world on our own. But doing this work together, by bringing us together across race, across place, across our party, who you love, you know, it just is so amazing that we can do great work together, and I'm just so thrilled that I get to share that with y'all tonight. I hope that you learned something about myself. I'm really looking forward to hopefully earning your vote on February fifteenth, and I'm really looking forward to seeing everyone else there out on the trail. So, thanks again to the League. Thank you to everyone who showed up tonight, and thank you to all the candidates who shared their time and energy tonight as well.
Thank you. Liv Miller, if you'd please offer your closing statement?
Of course, I also wanna say thank you to the League and thank you to everyone for tuning in. I had a really great time, so thank you for hosting. You know, the last job that I had before I moved to Green Bay, I was the Chief of Staff Representative Jimmy Anderson down in Madison. And yeah, I learned how Madison works, I learned how bureaucracy moves and how it doesn't move. I learned how to negotiate with people on my side, with people on the other side. I learned how to write policy memos and snappy talking points. But Jimmy was such a great mentor to me, because he taught me how to be a voice for the people. He taught me how to listen, really hear their voices. He taught me to know people's stories, to engage with people's stories. And that's how I can represent people, representing real people with real lives, not problems to be solved, but just dreams to come true. That's never gonna be lost on me if I'm your county board supervisor. You know, Representative Anderson also taught me that polarization is a huge issue. He worked with the other side on drunk driving laws specifically, something that was really personal to him. But he also taught me to not tolerate lies and to not tolerate hate. He taught me that people are gonna negotiate in bad faith, and they're gonna try to waste my time. And when that happens, I need to focus on my values and I need to focus on my people. I need to focus on the constituents in my district and what they wanna solve, not focus on convincing someone who doesn't wanna be convinced and who wants to put me down for who I am, wants to deny people rights for no reason other than he thinks it's a threat to his own. That's not how I'm gonna operate. I'm gonna represent my people, and I'm gonna fight for the values that I know we all share. I'm an engaged member of this community. I'm gonna be present, I'm gonna be attentive to you, your needs, your stories and your voices. I'm driven, I wanna get the job done. I have the energy, I have the inspiration to get the job done. I can't wait to keep this campaign going, to continue the conversation with all of you. Have a good night.
You, Tom Freiberg, if you'd offer your closing statement?
Sure thing. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to thank you for the invitation and allowing me to participate in this candid forum. I think I will, I'll also try to keep it fairly short, but you know, I, I, the issues that I'm focusing on are something that has been on my mind, you know, since I've been seven years old. You know, climate change is, is the biggest reason that I've, I've been running. And I remember, it must have been back in, you know, early two thousands when Brian Williams was doing a special on climate change, and seven-year-old me was absolutely terrified from that point on, and that sort of formed my, my drives and my fears going forward. So, I, if you are, you know, worried about a lot of the same things I am, whether that's, you know, climate change, mental health. And I just bought, bought a house, so, you know, affordable housing isn't going to really affect me that much, but you know, I know that is a big issue for a lot of people my age, you know, instead of, you know, renting a single-bedroom apartment for a thousand dollars or eight hundred dollars a month, and, you know, getting a low-paying job isn't really going to allow you to build the future that you want for yourself in a timely manner. So, I think the, the issues of younger generations needs a bigger voice, and we need to be more proactive to provide a future that, you know, everybody in Brown County can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanne Kramer, if you'd please offer your closing statement?
Yes, like everybody else has said, thank you for that invite to this. I applaud you for putting it together, and I just look forward to continuing to meet the constituents in this, in District Seven. It's been a pleasure so far with the conversation I have had with people, and I would appreciate that anybody considering to vote for me on February fifteenth. Thank you, and I can, good luck to everybody else that's on this meeting tonight.
Thank you. Well, and thank you to our district candidates, our, our candidates for the Brown County Board. And they are District Four candidates Emily Jacobson and Noah Reece, District Five candidates Liv Miller and Daniel Thino, and District Seven candidates Tom Freiberg and Leanne Kramer. Thank you for participating in this virtual forum and sharing your perspectives with us. And thank you to our audience participating virtually and for submitting your thoughtful questions. We received many of them. We would like to extend our appreciation to League Board Member Karen Schley for coordinating this forum, League Member Steve Hero for the technical work to set up and record this forum, Jane Benson for reviewing the questions, and Linda Bartlett, our League President, for serving as the timekeeper. As a reminder, the recording of this forum is available on the League of Women Voters Greater Green Bay Facebook page and website. Please remember to vote by absentee or in-person at the polls on Tuesday, February fifteenth. Early in-person voting starts on Tuesday, February first. This ends the Brown County Board of Supervisors Forum, brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay. Have a very nice evening.
Do we just leave now?